Kevin calls this regular meeting of the Kingsville Symphony Mission Order. It's June 23, 2014 at 6:04. Four Mission Rooms are present and each Mission works as Allen on vacation. We'll be here. We open our meetings with a prayer and pledges of allegiance. If you care to join us, please stay in.
Father, we ask that you be here with us throughout this meeting. Help to guide us to do your will and all that we say and all that we do for the betterment of this community, state, and nation.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
See, you leave the statement three weeks and you forget that pledge. You wanted to state it. I got a comment about that. Okay, we have minutes from the June 9 meeting. Is there a motion? Some will. There's a motion made by Commissioner Beckles to approve the minutes of being seconded by Commissioner Luber. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanier?
I'm standing.
Me or you, Dan?
I'm actually standing also. Still passive, then? It doesn't? Well, I'll vote for it. Yeah, I know we can't because we could sit. We've got to have the minutes in the record yet. Is there any problem in that, Courtney?
No, sir.
Okay. Then we'll go into the next item of public hearings. The first public hearing will start at 6:04. It's a hearing regarding condemnation proceedings for a structure located at 708 South 12th Street here in Kingsville. Robert, good seeing you.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor Fisher. It's been a while since I've seen you. This is condemnation hearing for 708 and 706. It's a one-structure duplex with two addresses, 708 South 12th. Both of them, actually, 708 and 706, both have no power, have no water connected to it. Our back taxes is owed on it, it's an amount of around $1,800. It's not in the historical district, it's actually right across the street from the historical boundary. Right now, has anyone made any contact with the owner? Actually, we have not received any contact back from the owner. The house is in very, very bad shape. They're dealing with photos there and we recommend this for condemnation.
Any questions or comments?
How much are these back taxes?
Eighteen, twenty, twenty. A thousand eight hundred.
Okay, thank you.
This is the second piece of property we've had in Kingsville in the last month.
Yes.
And he's just got to take care of business.
No response. As a matter of fact, on the previous property, there was an interested party that wanted to intervene and try to make something happen to save that property. Unfortunately, I got an email from that person saying that he could not get ahold of the owner and basically stepped back and said, "Do what you've got to do with that pre-deed property." We were willing to work with him, trying to save him, but there was no response from him.
Okay. Well, pictures tell stories. I mean, it's... Any other discussion? If not, we close this meeting at 6:07. We'll go into the next public hearing, which is regarding condemnation proceedings for a structure located at 611 West Weasatch here in Kingsville, and this meeting is going to start at 6:07. Well, behind something I did mention in the other one, and I guess I should, is that these are public hearings, so anyone that wants to speak about this particular subject, they have an opportunity to. They can come up to the podium and tell us who you are, where you're from, and your address, and you have five minutes to talk about this particular subject. And if there's somebody here that wants to talk about the lats, I will reopen that hearing. If there's someone here that wants to talk about the property on 12th Street. I don't see anybody that would want to do that, so let's just go on into this one.
This one is for 611 West Weasatch. That one's just south of Smokeback Field, between Armstrong and Wells. This property here also is in very, very bad state of repair. Recently, when some high winds came through, the front porch roof fell down, so the photos there show before the roof really went down. There is no power on this, there is no water on this. This was a tax foreclosure property, and it's actually Cleaver County trustees that have this property. There are about $7,300 in back taxes owed on this. It's not in the historical district, and, you know, there hasn't been anything, anybody that wants to save this property, no interest in this one.
You know, Robert, why, if the tax trustees, whatever agency that is, why wouldn't they just agree to a voluntary nill of this?
Well, I think it's a... We sent the letter to the judge. Is the judge ahead of this?
I have no idea.
Yeah, I think it's a group effort, and we did contact the judge, and we hadn't got the signed document back from Judge Easely O'Neil that we were willing to...
It's pretty obviously good for the picture that this one needs to come down. You could have saved it if you wanted to.
Yeah, and even with the voluntary, they've got to be able to pay some amount to get the building down, and if they're not willing to pay that amount...
We could propose to them something, but it's...
I'm just, there's a question. I was just talking, you know, since we're in another agency, if they would agree and just nill it. Okay. Any questions on this? The number closes meeting at 6:10, and we'll go on to reports from Commission staff.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll be out of town Thursday and Friday attending the NCA conference in Galveston. And that conference closed Sunday afternoon, so I won't be getting back in until Sunday afternoon. Pleased to report that you've selected the new tourism director, Leo Alakone, and look forward to him starting the first week in August. Cynthia Martin will continue to fill in as the interim director, and I think she's doing a good job on an interim basis, so things are running smoothly, I think, and will continue to run smoothly at the Tourism Office. And one thing I like to do with the Commission's permission is ask Charlie Cardenas and Robert Saucy to give us some information on wayfinding. It's been something we've budgeted for for a couple of years. I think they can share a lot of information. They're currently working on TechStop. Dick Messbar, by the way, is also working on this, and so I want them to share with Angela at the City Commission.
I understand that the Commission already pretty much knows. You've heard wayfinding already down the line. I just want to give everybody, for the sake of the audience, a real quick synopsis of what wayfinding is and what we're trying to accomplish, and then I'll finish it up with the status of this project. Really, what we're trying to do with this project is emphasize Kingsville as a destination. This was something that we inherited from tourism. What we want to do is highlight the key attractions, all the destinations around town. We really want to make everybody who visits Kingsville who's never been to Kingsville utilize those signs and to put our best face forward on these signs instead of routing them through, like, say, if you want to go to Ann and Kingsville, the fastest way coming, say, from Portless would be going through Corral Street and going that back route. But if you've never been there and you need those signs to find your destination, we really want them to see that Kingsville is a thriving community, so we run them through King Street and then come in on University Boulevard, so they get the best, our best impression, so to speak. So what we also want to do is we went the wayfinding, improved mobility, so they're not driving all around town lost looking for this particular destination. And also, for the people who live in Kingsville, when they drive by that sign, they know that, "Hey, you know, we've got something of value here. We've got a tourist spot. We've got, you know, the King Ranch. We've got all these great, great tourist spots." So it reinforces the community identity. So that's what we're really trying to do with this project. We use the term wayfinding, and we take it for granted that everybody understands that term. Really, when we talk about signing, we talk about highway guide signs, which are the large and go ahead and hit the next slide, large signs that you see up on the freeway and the small signs that you see scattered everywhere around. The highway destination signs, those are the ones that guide you to the right place if you're driving down FM 70. You want to get to Alice, go straight. You want to put a Kingsville turn left. Advanced warning signs, these are the yellow and black signs that you see everywhere, road crossings, all of these different ones. Regulatory signs, you know, the black on white, and then, of course, the wayfinding signs. This is what we're trying to accomplish here. We're trying to get wayfinding signs all along the roadway. We're working with TechStop because the main thoroughfare that we're wanting people to drive through is really state-maintained roads, which are King Street, 14th Street, General Cavassos Boulevard, is all FM roads that run through our town. So we met with TechStop, and, well, these are our locations that we've chosen. They all have to meet a certain design criteria or a certain criteria to even be considered a destination. So Charlie's going to talk up quickly about how we came to this particular list. So these are the spots. We are going to work individually with each one of these folks here. We've already been talking to a few, and get them to fully understand why we're routing them the best way we think is the best way rather than the quickest route. And then, on the next one there, this is the project status. This is where we are now. Early June, we met with the Kingsville Alliance. We gave them, Kingsville Alliance, you know, who they are, they're just a group of people who are, a lot of them are on the list as destinations. We met with them, made sure that they were on board. We explained why certain places were not on the list, like NAS Kingsville's not necessarily on the list, because it's not really a tourist spot or destinations, you know, where people go to work. So we're continuing to meet with those wayfinding destinations like Coastal Bay College and maybe the Mother Gulea Shrine. The city engineer is going to talk about wayfinding. On June 10 last week, we shared the plan with TechStop. They preliminarily approved the plan. They just wanted to make sure that we have all of our destinations set in stone. They don't want to go back and change anything because once those signs are in there that the city is going to install and place, they're going to stay there for a very long time. Our plan is for Charlie and I to have a set of plans by late July and have that out for implementation. Charlie will work on ordering the signs and getting everything all set up, and by August, depending on our budget, because we don't have an exact number of signs that we're going to need, but we do know our budget, we might need a little more or less to get to that point, so we can see in August, we might come to you for a resolution, and then as soon as we have that number, implement the plan. So that's where we are on this project. Really quickly, on the next slide, just a quick little example of how the wayfinding signs work. It's a really quick job that I did, but if you look there, you'll see little white, little white blocks. Those are the signs there. And if you're coming from Corpus Christi, going down US 77, and you want to get to downtown Kingsville, there should be a sign, well, not on the freeway, but off the freeway. Once they're off the freeway, there will be a sign that says Downtown Kingsville, along with a bunch of other signs on that list, Downtown Kingsville, King Street exit. So when you're at King Street, you have a decision to make. Do I keep going straight or do I turn? There'll be an arrow telling you to turn on King Street. And when you get to 14th Street, you might be confused, and you might think, "Oh, this is another decision point." So at 14th Street, you'll say, "Continue straight." There might be other destinations to go left or right. And then when you get to Sixth Street, you should see a sign that says Downtown Kingsville to the right, and you'll go in downtown Kingsville. Never mind the little drawings I did on there, it was my last copy, but this is an example of the sign that we're talking about. There'll be more arrows and destinations underneath. We're still debating about using the Kingsville seal. We were thinking about maybe utilizing something that'll just speak to wayfinding and wayfinding alone, maybe like the spur with a G on it, you know, for Kings or K with a spur. We're still working on something that's going to just basically talk wayfinding and only wayfinding, a symbol for that top, or maybe just a little high school or something. So we're still debating the type of aesthetic at the top. So that in a nutshell is the status of the wayfinding project. Charlie's going to talk really quickly about design criteria, just in case anybody has questions about why isn't my destination on there. So Charlie, talk about that.
Just real briefly, again, there are certain criterias to be on these wayfinding signs. It's a civic destination, a cultural destination, visitor, and a recreational destination. So Dick Cleaver Park, obviously, is one of those recreational destinations. City Hall and the courthouse, that's a civic destination, and cultural is usually museums and things like that. So we're still looking at the educational institutions like Tamuk and Coastal Bay College, and we're looking at some of the considerations for, let's say, the new high school. And that might be considered recreational when it comes to playoff games and basketball games and things like that, the wayfinding to the high school that way. And of course, like Mr. Saucy said, that we want to put our festre streets forward with that, and we'll take them down General Cavassos to get to the high school and things like that. So that's part of the criteria. Now, another criteria is, a different sign is what's called a traffic generator sign. Those signs are, if there has to meet a certain criteria for the size of the city, so many parking spaces or so many visitors to that destination. And that's really not part of the wayfinding, how we're going to put them in, the wayfinding sign, but that's something we're looking into because, let's say, there's a certain group that doesn't meet wayfinding criteria, it might meet the traffic generator criteria. That's kind of the plan that we're going to go in there, go in and present to TechStop. One of the things is, we said on TechStop right away, and we're going to get a resolution. So kind of similar to what the next one we're going to, resolution when we did the no cellphones signs. We had to do resolutions, so we put it on TechStop right away, similar to this. This is going to be a similar view. So speaking about that, the signs did come in, and we have been putting them up, we started putting them up today, the no cellphone signs, Corral and US 77. So remember, don't text and drive, and don't use your phone anymore. Now, the questions I'm going to answer, any questions, I'm at the end of the program.
I think we make it except for the air on that end.
Courtney, Bluetooth?
Bluetooth, there are wireless headphones.
There you go. Just for you, we'll let you use Bluetooth.
Good job.
Thanks, sir.
This longtime Kevin, so thanks for the thought about this.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. They were budgets a third year ago, too. And by the way, the cost for the cellphone signs, for 15 signs, it's been about $7,000. So does it give you, and that's with the posts and the concrete and the way to put them in, so...
Labor, too.
Labor, too. I mean, that's all included on there, so it doesn't give you an idea for that kind of cost. We have the, that being said, we have the money for the wayfinding program as well. I'm confident with the money budgeted for this, we'll be able to do this project.
Okay. Anything else? Courtney?
Just a reminder that our next regularly scheduled meeting is July the 14th, so agenda items will be due next Thursday, July the 3rd. We will also be having court on July the 3rd and July the 4th, which is next Friday, is a city holiday. As the city engineer had mentioned, they did start putting up the cellphone signs. Once all of the signs are installed, we'll notify the police department so they can begin active enforcement.
All right. Anything else?
Please, sir.
Anything for the commission? Well, that's some things I want to talk about. First of all, 4th of July, there's going to be a lot of activities in town, and Alex will be out here. I know we have pet parade, the bicycle parade, and just the parade in general.
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock downtown starts at the courthouse.
Pet parade, the pet parade starts on 7th and Cleaver, bike parade on 8th and Cleaver, and the regular parade down at the courthouse, like we always do.
Okay. It starts at 10 o'clock?
Kids will go first, and then, yeah, and then we'll have a ceremony at the pavilion.
Okay.
And...
That's down on Sixth Street, across from, or right down by Cleaver Bank, and that's probably going to be about 11 or 12.
Yeah, probably about, I don't think the parade's going to last more than about half an hour.
Yeah.
Probably about 10:30, and then we'll have some games and everything's great.
Okay. And then that afternoon at 3 o'clock?
3 o'clock.
3 o'clock is the Kingsville Symphony is having their 4th of July event, which is, it's, I like the Christmas one, but this is my second favorite, but it's really a good event. If you like patriotic music, it's a lot of, it's really good, and I would encourage all our citizens to try to, you know, partake. Couple other things?
Fireworks.
Fireworks, and ASD's, it was a base, will not be open to the public. Ever since the shooting in Virginia where they had, where the Navy, the Navy yards there, the Navy's really gotten strict about these type of events, and they've shut it down. But that doesn't mean you can't get up out to the golf course, ring the highway out, and enjoy it. And a lot of people do that anyway. So, I mean, I guess that starts at dark, so. Couple things.
That's on the 3rd, right? Is it the 3rd or the 4th?
Yes. The fireworks are on the 3rd, right?
Fireworks on the 3rd. 3rd? Thanks, Luke. That's Thursday, July the 3rd. Okay. Couple things. I was at a meeting, EDC meeting this week, or last week, and I know we're in the process of negotiating the phone call center, and turning it over to the university to make it into a research center. And Dr. Talent was at this particular meeting, I think Commissioner Root was there, and also maybe feel really good, want to congratulate staff, hopefully it comes to fruition, because he was at the College Station with Chancellor and all the other presidents, and quite frankly, they were very impressed with how the city's stepping forward and helping out, and that's going to be a, and I think Dr. Talent used words, a game changer for research and development in the Eagle Bridge and other shelves, and I could see a lot of really great things coming from that. So it's a, that's a really great partnership that we develop. Also, had met with Captain Meiser this morning, and the, I got a letter from Keith Graff with the governor's military preparedness commission. The big push, and they got all the, all 15 communities that have, in Texas, that have military facilities, there's a push to finance or fund, not with loans, but grants for military projects on these bases that will help rack proof them. Texas is lagging way behind. I mean, if you look and see what's going on in Virginia, Florida, Connecticut, and other states, there's a lot of money that's going to these bases to really help them, and hopefully we're going to, we're going to be able to lobby the legislature and to give us some money to help us with projects. Captain Meiser has a couple of projects that we're working on that we can use. They're looking at up to $5 million for each base, and that's a, I thought they'd probably do it proportionately, and Kingsville would really lose out because, you know, you're dealing with Fort Hood and, you know, Fort Bliss and some of these better facilities, but apparently they're talking about just across the border, they're both going to get the same amount of money. So that could be a really good thing. And the one last thing I want to compliment staff on is, I was gone 17 days, and you would think the show would miss the mayor. I had a 13-day meeting with the city manager, and we were up to speed, and I had to do it. So I think that's a real, I guess y'all will meet me. Call me if you need me.
I was just telling them to work there, everybody else did.
Yeah, but I think that's a real compliment to staff that, you know, that I'll thank you to run as a community.
Well, I recommend it for an extension, though.
Does anybody else have anything? Okay, if not, we'll go into public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone that wants to talk about anything, they want to talk about, on or off, you have three minutes to talk about that subject. You just have to come to the podium, tell who you are, and what you're, where you live. And Mary, this is your opportunity.
I'm ready, Sam. I'm ready. My name is Mary Freeland. I owned a day and nightclub for the last 20 years, and just a week and a half ago, I found some people building over there in the alley, and they told me that they were told to build this thing for the dumpster. And I came over here to speak to Mr. Saucy. He tells me that he sent me a letter, but it went, it came back. I said, "All you have to do was go across in the water department, they would have gave you my mailing address." But no, it's all, I don't know what's going on, and I am an old woman. I'm not young, Simon, you know that, but I cannot go all the way 200 feet or more to go and dump the trash that I build up out of my club, because I have a ramp that comes in from my, from my back, back door to the dumpster that I have, and I can show it to you right now. You want to see it?
Sure.
And why, this is my dumpster right there.
I want to have a look at it.
Okay. It's clean, it's nothing to have people put me out there in the alley where when it rains, the trucks are going to get stuck. I've always kept the dumpster there, and it's always been there for the last 80 years. Whose idea was it to come in and just move it?
Okay, Mary, you can go back to the closing.
Thank you.
That's all.
I have other things that could have been improved, the street, all the kinds of things, but they pick on my dumpster, and I think that's very wrong. I paid my taxes. I pay for the dumpster. I pay for everything. And people are just going to come in there and just take over? That's wrong. That's it, that's it for now.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll go on to the senators. Oh, time out. Yeah, I almost forgot mine. Come on up, KKB members, we have people that we need to regulate. Okay, you want to, you want to give me?
I'll have to give you.
Oh, okay. David, Kim too? All right. I got it. Come on up. All right. David Kim too has only been with the sanitation department for a short time, and like others, he wants to do a great job and help out in other ways. This time he became Danny's, that's Danny Ria's assistant in helping with the new walkways and the south side brick edging, whether it was shoveling or compacting, sand cutting or placing bricks, or just having, giving Danny a hand where needed. David's efforts are greatly appreciated because he also cares. Efforts like David help pull everything together. KKB library patrons wishing to do something, the city, and of course, public works, all help out in making Kingsville a better place to live, one small step at a time. Thank you, David, for your efforts and care. I really do appreciate that. I tell you, that's a, it takes, it takes everybody to make it happen, and it's good that we have people like you working with us. Thank you so much. And the Because You Care Award, this certificate is given in sincere appreciation to David Kim, for going the extra mile to beautify our community and make it a better place to live. It's presented the 23rd day of June, 2014, by Keith Kingsville Beautiful. It's signed by our president, Diane Luber. Thank you so much. signed by, by our president, Diane Luber. Thank you so much. You've already gotten one of these, haven't you?
Yeah, I might get a little load of them.
Too bad you're not green standing. All right. Danny Ria's has been the man, the man yet again. Danny, an equipment operator too, with over thirty years of the city of Kingsville, volunteered yet again to finish off a, a complete makeover of the exterior of the library. One of the tradespeople's initiated a project in the rear of the library to transform an unused space into a poetry garden. And that's one of the least things he really likes to, to write and recite poetry. Poetry was placed on the walls of native Texas law, or, I do. Danny decided that using paper stones left over from his old skate garden project would make a perfect walkway. And using his knowledge and skill, he transformed a nice area into a permanent attraction. He also worked on the south side of the library and placed brick edging along an area where K K B has planted ground, has planted ground cover to sharply delineate the grass areas from the planted area. Danny wants to do a great job of sanitation and just importantly, does whatever he can to make Kingsville wonderful. Thank you so much, Keith, Danny. So, you know what this is. This is a, a sincere appreciation to Danny Ria's for going the extra mile to beautify our community and make it a better place to live. It's presented, uh, this the twenty-third day of June, two thousand fourteen by Keith Kingsville Beautiful. It's signed by our president, Diane Luber. Thank you so much. I don't feel like that camera. I've got one more, and we gotta do, and this, I don't, I don't, I really don't want to do this one. I tell you, we're, Michael Widen's here at A S Kingsville. He's, you're, you're separating from the military?
Uh, I'm already separated.
You're already separated. And he's going home, he's back to, to Round Rock. You've been with us for two, three years now? Two and a half years, yes. And he's been on the Keith Kingsville board with us. And has just, whenever we've needed something, he's, he's always been there for us. He's, he's marshaling troops or organizing events and just been, I don't think he's missed very few meetings. I can't say that. But I mean, just been a great, a great citizen. And we're, we're really gonna miss him much, I tell you what. And then our loss is Round Rock's a game. So, I'm sure you're gonna be doing the same thing for those folks up there. Thank you so much for what you do. And you are our volunteer. Stanley got the other one? Well, sorry. You're gonna be the volunteer of the year for two thousand fourteen, Michael Widen. In recognition of your dedication to K K B and the importance of getting back to your community, be volunteering. Thank you, you so much. Okay. Now we're going to the considered agenda.
Make the motion we approve the considered agenda as stated.
Second, motion made by Commissioner Fainey to approve the considered agenda as presented second by Commissioner Pickles. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Pickles?
Yes.
Commissioner Fainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Mayor Peegay?
Yes. We're going to our regular agenda, considered condemnation of structures located at seven oh eight South Twelfth in Kingsville. I don't think we need to hear anything. I think those pictures pretty much tell the tale. I think we just probably need a motion. Unless somebody has, and I don't want to cut off discussion, if somebody wants to talk about it.
I'll make a motion if I'm not able to repair a building or structure that's unsafe in present condition, it's a violation of ordinance and cannot be corrected without substantial reconstruction. Then declare the building or structure to be public nuisance and order its demolition by owner, agent, person in charge. In thirty days, city shall obey any manner, any manner it deems necessary and proper.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Pickles to condemn this property, seconded by Commissioner Fainey. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Fainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickles?
Yes.
Mayor Peegay?
Yes. Next item is considered condemnation of structures located at six eleven West Wee Sag here in Kingsville. Again, I, I think both of these are just, I mean, it's pretty obvious over there beyond repair. And you not had any comments or contact?
We actually had six of these ready to go to you. Four of the six went to voluntary, which is pretty, pretty good. They're starting to come around.
Make a motion if I'm not able to repair a building or structure that's unsafe in present condition, it's a violation of ordinance and cannot be corrected without substantial reconstruction. Then declare the building or structure to be public nuisance and order its demolition by owner, agent, person in charge. Within thirty days, city shall obey any manner it deems necessary and proper.
Second. Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Pickles to condemn this property, seconded by Commissioner Fainey. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickles?
Yes.
Commissioner Fainey?
Yes.
Mayor Peegay?
Yes. The next item is considered introduction of an ordinance renaming South Twenty-Seventh Street, also known as F M thirty-three twenty, a golf course road within the city limits.
Yes. F M thirty-three twenty, uh, is, is the state road that runs through, within city limits. As it is now, runs north-south, uh, Golf Course Road goes from the city limits up to General Cabasos. And then after, north of General Cabasos, along F M thirty-three twenty, it becomes South Twenty-Seventh Street. Now, there are no, no addresses to South Twenty-Seventh.
We're doing this because of those new apartments?
I think it would be, well, it, it, it kind of is. Right now, their, their monument sign is set up for F M thirty-three twenty. And they were like, well, are you sure that's the right word? I mean, would you like it to be saying something else? You know, are you sure that's the name? Usually in town, they have, they have a name. And so, we, we researched a bit and we saw it was, uh, South Twenty-Seventh Street. And we looked a little deeper and a lot of the addresses that were going on for those few businesses that are, that are addressed, uh, you know, along thirty-three twenty are all addressed F M thirty-three twenty. So, we, we see that the, the terminology, I mean, the term, South Twenty-Seventh Street isn't used. Recall, we did talk about North Twenty-Seventh Street, the proposal to possibly build that road, uh, over, uh, from Corral up to Sage Road. Did that ever happen?
Not yet.
Not yet, not yet. So...
That's still a real possibility.
Yes, it is. It is. But we're working to kind of change it a little bit. But, knowing that through, in, you know, through inference, like, well, it's over on Golf Course Road. Most people know that road as Golf Course Road. So, when the apartments start, start up, we would like them for the, the monument sign to say Golf Course Road. And when other, other, uh, businesses start up, or other homes start up in that area, we would really like it to say Golf Course Road because you would know what section of town that you're talking about. Because South Twenty-Seventh Street and North Twenty-Seventh Street are so far apart, it really, it really kind of confuses the matter. So, if somebody, uh, who calls in with an emergency saying, "I'm on Twenty-Seventh Street," there might be, are you on North Twenty-Seventh Street or are you on South Twenty-Seventh Street? And they're so far apart, you can't really get to them. So, we decided, uh, I worked with, well, actually, I got a call from, from the county. The county emergency services asked, is there something that we could do about this, this issue? And we dug a little deeper in it and we, we noticed that it wouldn't really be inconveniencing anybody at this point because even, even, uh, the, the funeral home, which is access, which has access off of F M thirty-three twenty and no access off of General Cabasos, is actually addressed as General Cabasos' address. For, uh, Mr. Breenwood's, uh, business out there, it's actually addressed, uh, General Cabasos. Which is kind of a little unusual for me when I, when I did the research on that. Uh, but everything else is undeveloped. So, I would like to propose to, uh, to, to change the name to Golf Course Road.
You know, I, when I first saw this, I thought, well, this might be an opportunity and naming an opportunity for us to, to, you know, there's people that have really done some great things that, that we can recognize. But I just got back from Rome and they, their streets, you'll be on a street and you're going along and all of a sudden, it's got another name. And you're talking about confusing. And I mean, then you go along with it and then it, it changes again. So, I really think that it would be important for us to be consistent. Because it's already part of his Golf Course Road. Yeah. You only Golf Course, they'll know exactly where you're talking about. Even though I'd like to call it Spide Carolakis Lane. Can't do that. Good grief, boy. Anybody have any questions about this in the introduction item?
I think it's a great idea too. Everybody knows it's Golf Course Road. Makes sense.
All right. Let's go to the next item. Consider introduction of ordinance changing the zoning map in reference to two point zero six six one acres lot out of six block six, K T and I County, known as six hundred, sixteen hundred North Fourteenth Street from C two retail district to C four commercial district. Amending the comprehensive plan to account for any deviation from the existing comprehensive plan provided for publication.
Yes. This is a housekeeping issue. Uh, this is the rezoning of K C Hall from C two retail to C four. Um, we needed to provide, uh, public theory notice and paper before we, well, well, it wasn't in the ordinance, but it wasn't a statute. So, we decided for the betterment of everything, we're, we're going back and re, reintroducing it.
Okay. Any questions about that? If not, this again is an introduction item. If somebody has an issue with that, do not get hold of the city manager. Uh, next item is considered introduction of ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by changing the zoning map in reference to twenty-one point seven, point seven acres of K T and I County. Cutting block nine, lot, let's see, Clark, let's see, P T three, four, and six out of a sixty-four point six seven acre flat addressed as thirteen thirty-one West Center. The Truest Avenue from Agriculture District to Multifamily District amending the comprehensive plan to account for any deviation from the existing comprehensive plan provided for publication. This the same issue?
Yes, it's the same.
Okay. Any, anybody have any questions about that? All right. Again, this is an introduction item. If you do, we have time. What are, what are these, are we gonna have a, a lot for this? Is that gonna be a six o'clock meeting? Okay. Next meeting. All right. All right. Then, uh, we'll go into the next item. Consider resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a standing steering committee this event committee. Courtney?
Hi, yes, sir. Um, for over the last ten years, um, the city has participated in issues, uh, whenever they would come up regarding electric, uh, utility rate making cases and sometimes, uh, rulemaking cases at the P U C. Normally, we would get notice, um, there would be another sister city that would kind of steer or head the, head the program. And they would invite other, uh, communities in South Texas to participate. Uh, some have had as few as thirteen cities participate and some have had as many as ninety cities join in and participate. Um, but because of, uh, rulemaking changes, it seemed to be more the norm lately than, than the rate making matters. Um, and the expedited timeframes in which, uh, entities have to react because cities do have, um, jurisdiction over the, the rate making. Normally, there's sixty to ninety days from start to finish in a rulemaking case before the P U C. And there's about a hundred and eighty-five days from start to finish in a rate making case. And so, the ability to have people, um, join and act quickly has become, um, more necessary in order to effectively represent not just the city's, but the constituents' interests. Um, and so, having a standing steering committee in place would just mean that the committee has already got X number of cities on board, um, and participating in things as they need and as they come up. This initial, um, resolution just authorizing participation in the committee would not require the city to expend any funds. Uh, what would happen is once, uh, a certain number of cities agree to participate in the standing steering committee, as opposed to just doing it on an ad hoc basis like they had done in the past, where you send out a notice and then hopefully try and get people to respond in enough time before the action's gonna take place. Um, you would already have the committee authorized to act on certain cities' behalf. And so, they would act on the group's behalf. And then the group would be noticed. And if we chose to, we could opt out of that particular, um, rulemaking or rate ma, uh, rate making proposition. Uh, once the committee is formed, um, they could develop a budget and then they, at that time, could determine, um, a fee like per capita, um, per city. Say it, it would be up to no more than twenty cents. But usually, I guess in the past, it's been around eleven to twelve cents per capita. It would be assessed as a membership fee. And at that time, we could elect to, um, continue to remain part of the standing committee and then pay that fee. Um, and based on the current population, that would be less than three thousand dollars, um, at the twelve cent rate. And, uh, no more than fifty-two hundred dollars if it were at the high twenty cent rate, um, which is unlikely. But anyhow, the, the city could go ahead and decide to pay for it at that time, um, or to, you know, just opt out of being in the committee. And then go back to the ad hoc basis. But there's, there's value in numbers and it also allows not just for, um, entry into rulemaking and rate making cases. They would have the committee meet with the A D P executives at least once a year, um, in order to make sure that they're aware of what Texas city's, um, interests are. And so, like I said, it's something that the city has participated in, in the past, but on an ad hoc basis. Um, and so now they're just asking us to be like a standing Yes.
Okay. What would this, what's the timeline on this? If we, if we pass a resolution, then we're...
Then we would, uh, send it off to the, um, law firm that would be managing the steering committee for us, uh, the Lloyd Guston Firm, and also the City of Victoria. Um, so they're taking the lead also, as they usually have taken the lead in the past in, uh, the rate making issues.
Would the, the speed that we're gonna have to pay, is that something that we get paid during this budget?
Well, if the...
If I'm understanding you correctly, then go on.
Approving this particular resolution would not, would obligate the city to anything in particular. You know, they would just say, yes, you know, we're interested in participating. Assuming they get enough cities to participate, um, then an executive committee would be formed and they would set a budget. And then based on the budget, they would determine what per capita rate, um, from the members would cover the budget, kind of like, you know, you do when you're setting a budget.
What if we don't like what they're doing?
You have the right to opt out.
Okay.
You have the right not to, you know, pay your membership fees. And you have the right to opt out at any time from any particular, um, thing that they're intervening in.
So, the more cities that will join the, this particular, uh, committee, uh, will be called the less for us to pay?
Yes, sir.
I make, I make a motion that we consider resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a standing steering committee for the city.
Where's the motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Pickles, meaning to pass this resolution. Pickles, seconded by Commissioner Fainey. Uh, any other discussion? Any, uh, roll call vote?
Commissioner Pickles?
Yes.
Commissioner Fainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Mayor Peegay?
Yes. Next item is consider resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a standing steering committee for the city.
Mayor, commissioners, this is a, uh, agreement to bore underneath the railroad crossing on Kennedy between, uh, fifth and sixth. Uh, it's part of the eighteen inch water line of the Kennedy that's down right now, right now, for the...
We've already budgeted for this?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It's just kind of...